Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, April 27, 2022, a meeting and public comment announcement. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city website and the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Our first order of business is roll call. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Lavelle, Mrs. Kel Smith, Chair, six members present.
Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern or official action which are or may be for City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. So keep it down on that list, okay? May we have the first speaker, please? Please state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Mr. Ludwig? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Les Ludwig, 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. I came back today for the second straight day for what I think is a very important lesson in parenting, a subject that apparently has been dismissed by 200 families when 200 kids hit the street and two were found dead, shot. Let's go back to a quieter period. And a young man named Mark Ludwig, my son, my middle son, walked up to a plainclothes policeman at Taylor Alderweil and asked to buy a wedge of marijuana, which in those days would have blackened his professional record for life. But how was a parent supposed to behave when the detective called me and said, "I want to bring my partner and I want you. I'm assigning you a task. I want all the parents and all the kids, all 15 of them, in that group, brought to your house. We're going to read the riot act and try and stop a rush to marijuana." And so I started at 3:00 in the afternoon to make the calls to get the parents together. And one parent, Sidney Cook, across the street, literally said, "I've been waiting six months for a business appointment, and I'm not coming." And my answer to him popped out of my mouth, thank God, and I said, "You're coming if I have to come across the street and drag you physically. You're a parent. You have a social responsibility, a community responsibility, and nobody's going to say no. You're going to come to the meeting, and they're going to hear the kids read out, because we've got to stop it as soon as we can, or otherwise we're going to have death." So they all came. And years later, my son told me, he said, "You know, Dad, we didn't stop, but we started thinking." So that meeting was key to keeping 15 young people alive, and one of them did go over the hill and died from an overdose of drugs. So now, how did I handle the situation as a parent? Well, other than having the meeting, I was very active at Bashalum Men's Club. I was the president. And I ended up buying a pool table at a community sale, and the kids made it a clubhouse. And I told my wife, "Here's 40 bucks. Go down, fill the house up."
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Your time's up.
Bye now.
Thank you. And our next speaker is, our registered speaker, is Naomi Mullen. I apologize, Naomi, I didn't realize you were first on the list.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. People like my husband and myself have been active in the community and more. This was read at his funeral. Michael J. Mullen Reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, and friend, and I would add, he was compassionate in his job as well. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life, as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. We, the people of Bon Air, have maintained our properties and participated in many functions there. Our community made it extremely clear at our town hall meeting in May of 2021 that we oppose a detrimental property. Join our supporters, Mayor Gani, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham for the creation of a green space. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of our community. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. And I'm also going to add that you and he were both great firefighters and also advocates for Pittsburgh Public School students. Our next speaker is Millie Sasse. Next speaker is Millie Sasse.
Here I am.
Morning.
Good morning. My name's Millie Sasse. I've been a resident of Oakland for more than 40 years. Please reject ordinance 2021-1906. Here's why. We know the developers build to exactly what zoning permits. This happens all over the city. The most egregious example in Oakland, I believe, is the Skyview. When a member of my community suggested that the developer might set back that building a bit further from Forbes Avenue, the response was, "That's what we are allowed to build, and that's what we will build. If you have a problem with that, talk to your City Council." So that's why I'm here today, to plead you to stop 2021-1906. Here's some history. I will give you an example where zoning legislation that was passed in 2002 saved my Oakland neighborhood from having a 100-unit apartment building built by Oxford Development right next to two-story homes. When the zoning plan was being developed, drafted in 2002, my husband worked with Bob Repi of City Planning in those days. Richard pointed out to Bob that the back lot of the car dealership was still zoned residential, and it should stay that way, because neighbors fought hard to keep some semblance in scale of a livability community. Back in 1962, Ophelia and Joe Hammer neighbors had successfully fought to keep the zoning residential, even though the owner of the car dealership had bought a number of houses and tore them down illegally before the neighborhood understood what was happening. What was happening? Still zoned. I'm sorry. We have heard plans to demolish homes from Walnut Capital, too. The difference is Walnut Capital is fighting to get the zoning changed so they can demolish legally, but not morally, I'd say. Back to history. So in 2002, the zoning on the back lot stayed residential, and most neighborhoods were not, neighbors were not even aware of it. But when Oxford attempted to build a huge residential building, some Oakland residents had long memories and were able to go down to city to uncover the records from 2002 voting on the zoning. That bill created OPRD, provided some residential compatibility standards, but also saved the back lot from being built on by, and Oxford withdrew the proposal. The point is, extensive public and resident input and transparency is critical to good zoning. The process that has led us to 2021-1906 with its numerous new zoning districts has been anything but transparent and had very little resident input. I hope you all have read the email letter that I sent to you recently. That letter alludes to some of the reasons why I believe that the only rational conclusion that council can make at this time is to reject 2021-1906. Let the Oakland plan finish its process of public hearing and consideration by council. Only then should it be acceptable for Walnut Capital to submit their development plans. Somehow, the public has been incorrectly led to believe that the plan put forth by Walnut Capital and the plan put forth by the city are the same thing. Walnut Capital would like us to think that, but it's not the same, and it should never have been put in front of council before the Oakland plan has been properly vetted with public presentations, discussions, and revisions. COVID has prevented a true public, a lot of true public input, but that should not prevent council to do the right thing. Please reject 2021-1906. What we really need are some hybrid hearings where there's back and forth talk with input and questions, and so we want to see.
Our next speaker is Elena Zaitsov. Elena? Is Elena on? Elena, please unmute your mic. She's on, but she's muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name and neighborhood.
I'm Elena Zaitsov. I've lived in South Oakland for 42 years. I'm here today to talk about ordinance 2021-1906, the Walnut Capital rezoning of part of Oakland. I have concerns over some of the boundaries. Let's start with Halkett Street. The only justification we were given by city planners for supporting it is that the owners wanted it. Of course they do, because Walnut Capital is going to exorbitantly overpay them for their houses and the developer wants it rezoned. Spot zoning, as defined by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, is a singling out of one lot or small area for different treatment from that accorded to similar surrounding land from which it is indistinguishable in character for the economic benefit or detriment of the property owners. Thus, Halkett Street is spot zoning. Pennsylvania courts have ruled that spot zoning is unconstitutional. Those 20 houses are not derelict and provide much-needed student housing. Let's move on to Zalima Park. Part of it is included on the map to be changed to UCMU. When I pointed this out to Deputy Director Dash after he finally had to agree with me, he said he would include it in his recommendations to the planning commission. When I required as to why he failed to do so, he said it is something I can point out at the public hearing. It's very frustrating that I had to uncover it. I was told I was wrong. Then it was acknowledged I was right, and something would be done. Then nothing was done, and it's left to me to convince you that this is a serious issue when Director Dash could have taken care of it. There is some future purpose why Walnut Capital wants part of Zalima Park, UCMU. All of Zalima Park should be zoned park. Right-of-way should not be rezoned, especially the one between the Isley Building and the Duquesne Light Substation, which is needed for safety. How many other right-of-ways are being rezoned by this? These are among many details which are very important and require time to review with diligence. That did not happen with City Council the first time, and it didn't happen with the planning commission. Hybrid in-person/virtual town hall meetings where true exchange can occur need to happen regarding 2021-1906. The three minutes provided to citizens without any answers is not adequate, just done because it's legally required. Questions don't get answered. Nothing gets explained. There's no back and forth. Now that it has been given back to you, please plan a series of town hall meetings on this. The one required public hearing is not adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. And that, is there any further speakers in the audience that wish to address City Council? Who's, because that want to talk to us? Seeing no further speakers, that moves us on to our next order of business. And it's to our Standing Committee agenda. And we'll begin with the Finance and Law Committee, and Mr. Lavelle was the chair.
Bill 266, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Office of Management and Budget to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Allegheny County Health Department for the United States Environmental Protection Agency's 2021 Targeted Airshed Grant to Purchase Five Battery Electric Refused Trucks and Electric Charging Infrastructure and Further Providing for Expenditures Not to Exceed $2,800,000.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill passes. And the next bill, Madam Clerk?
Bill 267, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with the Hines Endowment for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $27,336 for Leadership Training through a partnership with the Pittsburgh Futures.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to know a little bit about it. If somebody could just give me some information, I just, over before final vote next week.
Madam President, I'm here. I can answer any questions you have.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Director Pollak, do you want to?
Sure.
Identify yourself for the public and then continue. Thank you.
Sure. Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget. This project is an extension of some engagement between what was then the Gani mayoral transition process and a nonprofit leadership development organization called Pittsburgh Futures to conduct leadership training for members of the incoming administration, including directors of departments, to work on strategies for joint goal-setting and collaboration. It's been a very useful and productive process thus far, and it's ongoing. The Hines Endowment graciously agreed to fund the work in the amount shown in the resolution.
Did they give any direction of what they'd like to see in funding it? Because I know sometimes a lot of foundation funding comes with some criteria.
No, no, there was no directive to us. It was the organization providing the funding, which is led by some council members might know. His name is Jeff Webster. He also leads a business called Value Capture, which does this same kind of funding in the private sector. I'm sorry, the same kind of training in the private sector, approached the transition and Hines jointly with a proposal that they agreed to fund, but this did not come at the direction of the endowments.
Right. Thank you, Director.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or any abstentions? Bill was affirmatively recommended. And now we have our invoices. Can we have a motion to approve the invoices?
A move.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The invoices are approved. And we have interdepartmental transfers. We have none today. We have P cards.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? I have just a little bit of discussion again. I'm sorry.
Second.
Second.
Yes, thank you. And Madam Clerk, I think I mentioned it to you, that there's two, under the P cards, there are two invoices. One is for barricades, to build barricades for the marathon for DPW Construction Vision. And then there's a second one for the same thing. So it looks like they split the bill, which is illegal for council to do. So I just want to, first of all, I want to say, I'm going to ask our budget office. I know right now we're going through a lot of transition, a lot of things, a lot of illnesses and things in City Council. But I will say that that's the job of the budget office, to make sure that we're doing things legally when it comes to these things. So if these things come to us separated, I want you to take them off and work with whomever you need to work with to make them right, so City Council's not put in a position to vote on things that would put us in a compromising situation. So with that said, I think we should ask for some explanation, or should we ask for an explanation from the budget office? Is the budget office on?
Yeah. Hi, City Council. I'm available.
Please identify yourself for the public.
Michael Strolik, Budget Manager, Pittsburgh City Council Budget Office.
Thank you.
Is there a direct question, or do you want me to just summarize?
Well, could you tell us why this came through?
Yeah, it's, so it's similar, right? We're purchasing lumber from the same vendor for the same purpose, barricades for the marathon. I let it through, and I apologize if I shouldn't have, because it was ordered on different dates, and the actual types of lumber that they were buying were different.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to delete until we have a chance to talk to our budget office and to the, and to DPD.
What's the motion for?
Delete the two, just the two. Can we delete just two?
So moved.
Two public works for the DPW Construction for the barricades for the marathon. Thank you. All in favor of the others? Sorry, second? Can I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And can we have anybody, all in favor of all the remaining P cards? Do we have a motion to approve them? We did. Yeah, okay. All in favor? Let's try that again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposition? Any abstentions? Okay, P cards are approved. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me through that. And then our next. Yes.
Just for clarification, the items that we deleted, we can't, what does it take to get them back on the agenda if we need? Is that just something we do?
I guess we just put them back on next week.
Okay. Yeah, I guess it'd be good to understand what does qualify. If it is on a different date, and we could put that date on there, you know, if that is like a qualifier. So we understand that better. Okay.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to the Public Works Committee, which Mr. Coghill is the chair, and we have deferred papers. Madam Clerk?
Bill 104, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director or Acting Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city and through the city's Department of Law to adopt certain settlement terms and enter into a settlement agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway, Manchester Citizens Corporation, Northside Leadership Conference, and Rail Pollution Protection Pittsburgh in order to resolve claims arising from the application of the Norfolk Southern Railway Company for approval to reconstruct the crossing of the North Avenue-Brighton Road Bridge docket at the Public Utility Commission docket and from Northside Leadership Conference at all. Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission Appeal docketed at number 611, CD 2019, in the Commonwealth Court.
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Motion to hold for two weeks and second?
Second, brief discussion.
Brief discussion.
Yeah, I just want to say that we're in the, in the works of rescheduling a public community meeting about this. Unfortunately, we had to cancel, and so we're going to reschedule this. So thanks. I just want to thank council for, and also the chair for holding this bill until we can get that public meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. All in favor of the hold?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill is held. Thank you. And new papers, Madam Clerk?
Bill 264, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Authorize the Pennsylvania Resources Council Providing Electronic Waste Collection and Recycling Services for City Residents and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $315,000.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, so I don't know if all members received an email from Alicia Carberry, who used to be with the Paduta administration, but apparently the old company we were using for this just up and quit. And luckily, we were able to find somebody to fill in. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Councilman?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'll just have a little side chat with the councilman. I see Alicia Carberry on the, on the line. Sometimes I didn't know if she wanted to promote anything that's going to be coming along, or how the public would see this first, like would there be another mailing to let them know? Alicia, could you just state your name and title for the?
Hi, Councilman. Hello, everyone. My name is Alicia Carberry. I am the recycling supervisor for the city, based in Public Works out of Environmental Services. Yes, like Councilman, the Councilman mentioned, the previous company that we were using left us high and dry around October when I first started in this position. So we put this out to RFP. We had five responses, five bidders, and we selected Pennsylvania Resources Council as the best for a number of contributing factors. But the way that this will go, very similar to the last one. Twice a week, there will be a drop-off option in the Strip District at Environmental Services, and then they will again organize different neighborhood collection events for us. So just like in the past, we'll work closely with your staff for support on selecting locations and getting the word out to community members. Like all the programming that we do, you know, we want to make sure that this is accessible to as many residents as possible. We want to meet people where they are with getting the information to them. It's not a complicated thing. It's just, we need to remind people over and over that appointments are required and share with them what is acceptable to bring. And that, pardon me, and that fees will likely apply for a lot of these, even though the city subsidizes this, so it's more affordable than any local options.
Great. I recently helped someone take down an old TV. That was one of those ones where it's like in this cabinet, and it's like a projected television. Is that, it was, it was actually this, this, a lot of, lot of particle board involved in making sure that it worked, apparently. Is that something that would be able to be recycled?
Yeah, so we call those our CRTs, Cathode Ray Tube Televisions. And even though they have not been in production for quite a few years, we still have tons and tons throughout the city, in basements and attics and in some places, in alleys and over the hillside. So this will expand the options that people have to do the right to dispose of their materials properly at affordable rates.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? I'm just going to add that this is the program that I was started with Mayor Paduta, myself, and at the time, Dan Gillman. And, and I just want to say that it was something that was really needed in the city of Pittsburgh. And I'm glad to see this finally moving forward, because I was wondering what the holdup was, and then I heard about the contract concerns and some other things. But I do want to say that I have some concerns about the way we are doing some of the anti-litter things. I was at community meetings, you know, over this past month, and just things I'm hearing, it's, I just want to make sure when you're talking to our constituency and you're talking, we mean, that you're also making sure that you're talking and including council members, because I'll be honest with you, I'm going to start taking some steps in a different direction if I have to, because what I heard yesterday at a community meeting was not all complete information. It was not all accurate information, but it's what you're telling, it's the understanding of some people in the community groups. And so I'm just going to say, I don't want more misinformation spreading. That's why I think it's important for you to engage the council member, clarify something. I don't want a response back. I'm just going to say, I'll schedule a meeting with you, because I want to make sure that we are moving this forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
If I could just add, though, Councilwoman, you are one of the people who had an event, a neighborhood collection event scheduled after our contractor left. So what we're going to do with this, and part of the reason, we will promote this far and wide and ask for your assistance in doing so. To start, though, we'd like to do a soft launch and help those people who had previous appointments and were canceled on, so that they can, you know, get through the system and kind of test this out.
Thank you. I think that you and I should have a follow-up conversation. That's what I'm really.
Sounds good. Just wanted to clarify that for the good of the order.
Thank you. Any other members? Any other members? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Bill is affirmatively recommended. And moves us on to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Bill 268, Resolution Approving the Recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Oriole Drive be paved with asphalt in accordance with section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve a brief discussion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman?
Well, I know this is in your district, Madam President, and I'm just wondering myself, I thought that, you know, I put some legislation in some time ago where it's concrete to be replaced with concrete. Are you in agreement with this or you're?
So what I said to them was that they want it paved, they just want it paved. And my concern is that, I know that you put it in with concrete, it has to be repaved with concrete. But if we don't get it done, asphalt may never get done. Or we would use all of our budget for this one street. And it's, we share the street with Green Tree Borough.
Right, right, beautiful street.
Yeah.
So, okay, no, I was just.
These people have wanted it for a very long time. And I'm, I'm okay doing the asphalt, but they told me this is what we had to do, so.
That's, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure you and your constituents were good with it.
Yeah, I would love to replace the asphalt if it's, I mean, with concrete. I would love to replace it with concrete.
Right.
If it's possible, if not, then we'll do the asphalt. I just want to make sure that they clear the way to get it paved with it. Thank you. Any, any other discussion? All in favor, thank you, Councilman, for that. Any other, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Bill is affirmatively recommended. And that moves us on to, is this our last one? Oh, this is our last, thank God.
Bill 265, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA for the Administration of Certain Projects and Programs and Providing for the Payment of Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $1,237,000, Council Districts all.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President, I was going to suggest that we hear from the URA. But if you would prefer that we not, I'll just ask them to send an email to members. There's a small co-op agreement with just a few really good projects that I thought members might want to hear about. But if you'd prefer to wrap up.
Yeah, no, whatever you want, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I see Mr. Geiger there and, and we don't need to belabor the me, you know, the topic of the meeting, but there are just, you have a handful of programs that I think are exciting to hear about. If you just want to give us a brief synopsis.
Sure, yeah, we can make this real quick, I have some staff with me as well. So I'll start with the, the first item. Turn it over to Tom Link, the URA's Chief Strategy Officer. If staff could just provide like a two to three sentence summary of each program, that would be great. Tom, Employee Ownership Task Force?
Yeah, thanks so much, David. Thanks, Members of Council, thanks to the public, I know there's public watching this, appreciate all, all of your attention to the, the work we're doing. Yeah, the, the first item here is really money is in support of the, you know, a local Pittsburgh Task Force on Employee Ownership. You know, two or three sentences, you know, the mission here really is the Pittsburgh Task Force on Employee Ownership is a, is a sort of cross functional collaborative across government, for profit, nonprofit, academia, to provide greater resources for employee owned businesses. You know, generally speaking, you know, employee ownership of businesses can be a very positive thing for many different reasons. You know, largely keeping, you know, wealth within employee, you know, individual employees, quality, job creation, keeping, you know, sort of wealth in communities. And then on the business side can be a wonderful way to, when one thinks about a business sort of transitioning from ownership to its next phase, you know, the opportunity to perhaps, you know, it doesn't work for everybody all the time, but perhaps, you know, sell your business to your employees can be a very positive thing. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Do you have the funding?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
You maybe could just jump to what you're going to do with the funding.
Yeah, the monies would be used to provide, you know, really broader technical assistance, marketing and outreach and really support to that task, task force to provide direct support to individual businesses and employees who have this opportunity to think about, you know, employee ownership for their businesses. So it's, the monies are directly in support of that effort. So appreciate that very much. Full disclosure, I'm on the task force, I just want to make thank you for the public and for council.
Right.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And a shout out to Councilman Strasburg.
Yeah, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Of the task force. And we're glad that we have the URA that we can give money to, that can help us to, to reach, to do the outreach since you're already doing so much outreach to businesses.
Yeah, that's my two or three sentences. Thank you very much.
What else do we have, Mr. Geiger?
Yeah, the next one I can take directly, it's the Equitable Empowerment Fund. These funds are used to provide resources to our smaller development teams, largely MWBEs that are responding to development opportunities. Here at the URA, I think as you all know, we've tried to shift our focus and make sure that we're providing those development opportunities to all members of our communities, but with the understanding that not every respondent comes to the table with the same amount of resources. So this is used to provide those that are under resourced with just a leg up on the process. So I'll pause there. The next item is the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, I'll turn that over to Jamie.
Thanks, David. Jamie Petroski, Neighborhood Business District Analyst with the URA. So the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund and these monies, this is the fourth cycle for the NIF. And so these monies are for our nonprofit and community based groups to do placemaking and project based, or I'm sorry, neighborhood improvement based projects. So we are very grateful for these funds, especially for our smaller nonprofits in the city.
Thanks, Jamie. And then the last one, Nathan Clark for Land Care Workforce Development.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Councilmembers. Nathan Clark, URA Legal and Real Estate. Our land care program is designed to provide for proactive maintenance of URA structures and URA owned vacant property. And in doing so, we hire small to medium sized local businesses and have year round contracts with them for the maintenance. And provide part time and full time jobs to city of Pittsburgh residents. The, doing so and providing technology and support, you know, is, is fairly costly compared to bare bones maintenance. So any funding in support of this program is very much appreciated.
And those are all the lines covered by this co-op. So thank, thank all members of council for your support and, you know, we really appreciate it. Thank you, Councilwoman, for allowing us to provide some information about each one of these programs. We're, we're super excited about the work.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger, thank you, everyone. I, I also just want to add that what I like about each of these programs is that they're really, they're investments back into neighborhoods, which we've gotten away from, from, for a couple of decades. And that they are investments in kind of local ownership of commercial and just empowering our residents to kind of help activate them, right? And so I'm really excited about that. So I'll stop talking, Madam, Madam President, and, and give it back to you.
Thank you, Councilman, I actually appreciate all your, your comments and your help, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, well, thanks, Councilwoman, for, you know, having the URA on board, I'm sorry, on the meeting call so that we can hear more about the programs. I just have a specific question, so this 1.2 million, this is to pay for, not the individual services through the program or the grants, but it's to pay for the administration of it? So what, like, does the money go straight to the, like, to pay for staff at the URA? Sorry, I, I can only see the title of the bill. I, I didn't bring my, my laptop.
Uh, Councilman, the, the co-op covers the, the 1.2 million, that's the, the roll up of the four programs we just described. That's not for just administration of the program.
So like all advertising and?
Yeah, that's, that's the, the total you're, you're spending on each program. It does include some for administration, but, you know, that's for the whole program. We're not spending 1.2 just to administer the program, it's programmatic funding included.
Okay, yeah, I was just kind of curious about that because like the, the actual total amounts, like, how much do we put into, to land care? Like, how many millions of dollars do we spend in that individual program?
Councilman, I can, I can speak to at least the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund. That $500,000 is re, is all reimbursement grants. So none of that $500,000 is for administration or staff. David can speak to other line items.
Yeah.
So the NIF funding would be like $500,000 total?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so this, this does all add up, every individual program that was talked about here adds up to 1.2 to run all the programs.
To run those four programs, yes. Some of those programs.
I, I guess, I guess I had it wrong, I guess I was thinking that there was more than, like, like, for instance, NIF, there were, there was more than 500, but that program is, is capped at 500, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, that, that clarifies what I was asking, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
I hate to jump in, but additionally, it's a reimbursement so that money has already hit the streets and is in the hands of the groups that are doing the projects in the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? And thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, for also serving on the. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The bill is affirmatively recommended, thank you. And now we need a motion to reconsider, Councilman Wilson, you had a bill?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I want to make a motion to reconsider Bill 2022-0270 for members in person, we were looking at the, the bill that was printed out. This is the short term rental bill. For reference.
We need to bring it back just to, for clarity to members.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to discuss the, the motion.
Maybe they might want to know before they vote.
Yeah, and second?
Second.
Okay. Yeah, so the reason why bringing back this bill is so that we can, so I'd like to make a motion to hold for a cable cast public hearing.
Any, any questions? Comments? We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, what'd you say? No, Councilman Kalkil.
We got a vote on bringing it back.
We're vote, we voted to bring it back, okay. Councilman, do you want to make a motion for?
Make a motion to hold Bill 2022-0270 for cable cast public hearing.
Second.
The motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstention? We'll get that scheduled, thank you. And now we move on to our meeting announcements. So on Thursday, April 28th at 10:00 AM, there will be a Virtual Sunshine Act Training with the State Office of Open Records. This Saturday, April 30th at 1:00 PM at the Sheridan Healthie Active Living Center, 720 Sherwood Street, Pittsburgh 15204. There will be an in person only public briefing by the Reapportionment Advisory Committee on the proposed reapportionment district map. Speaker registration closes Friday, April 29th at 4:00 PM. Next week, council will hold our, our 10:00 AM regular and standing committees meeting on Tuesday, May 3rd and Wednesday, May 4th respectively. Speaker registration ends at 9:00 AM Tuesday and Wednesday morning. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage. You may also email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Do we have anything from members? I just want to say, you know, we've been talking about everything that happened with the violence in the city of Pittsburgh and things that we can do as, as a body. And I talked about how, you know, we've gone to every group that's supposed, that, that have some expertise in some of these things. We've done everything that we can to fund almost everything that we can, but we still are seeing an uptick in the violence in the city of Pittsburgh. I do believe part of that is, is law enforcement has to be a part of the solution. But I also think that parents have to be part of the solution and I think kids have to be part of the solution. And so I talked to council members and I've reached out to Cornell Jones and Sister Mary from Salt Save a Life Today. And we are scheduling a meeting with city council to meet with about 200 most at risk youth in the city of Pittsburgh and their families. And we're going to see what we can do as council to help on our end. And I think if everybody does that kind of stuff, then we should probably get to some better place, hopefully. At least, but hopefully we save some people or help some people. But, so I just want to keep you updated, that should be happening within the next maybe two weeks. And I'm going to reach out to the mayor's office as well. And then I do want to say, and, and I want to acknowledge something that one of our council members did and I want to commend them is Councilman Kalkil. This past week, I saw a post from about a child who was being bullied in school and the kid wanted to commit suicide and was just, I mean, it was a devastating situation. And it was in his district and I reached out to him because I was going to reach out, but I didn't want to step on his toes, but I thought somebody has to do something. And Councilman Kalkil intervened and the mother said that his intervention and his help in doing what he did probably saved his life. So I just want to thank you very much for what you did. Do we have anything else from members? Can I have, I just want to tell you, if I'm being bullied, I want him on my side. I mean, it was really fast and swiftly acted. Can I have a motion to excuse the absent members, adjourn them, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can adjourn, thank you, everyone.